Just want to make sure that we're likely going to need exec later. Can we use the same link as previously? Or if you can send us another link for after?
I'll reactivate the previous link for you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we are back from executive session. It's 6:38 PM. We are recording and sorry, I'm trying to juggle my papers here. Okay, and if I can just have a motion to open the the public session. Anyone?
This is Scott, I make the motion.
Scott, thank you, and a second.
This is Francine, I make a second.
Thank you, all those in favor, Carrie?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine? Francine, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, Daisy? Daisy, did you guys hear her, or is it just my sound?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and Jason?
Yes.
Thank you, Sonia, myself, yes, motion passes seven zero. We are back, okay, if I can just ask everyone to stand for the pledge and we have our student representative I see this evening. If you could lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the flag.
You're good, of the United States, go ahead. Thank you, I know it's not ideal, do the best we can with this. Okay, so we begin this evening with administrator remarks.
Actually, Sonia, could I just ask one thing?
Yeah.
Yesterday was eight years for Sandy Hook. So if I could just ask if we just have a moment of silence and keep those students and staff in our in our minds and in our prayers.
We can do that, we could take a minute of silence.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So who would like to go first, is Dr. Gosh with us?
I am.
There she is, okay.
Thank you, I have one brief remark. When we reopen school, we had asked families to choose between hybrid and all remote learning models. We said that at the end of the first semester, families who chose all remote would again have a choice to come back to hybrid. That questionnaire asking families to make that choice will go out this week. And we asked at all families whether they're in the all remote or hybrid learning model respond by January 15th. That'll give the buildings and transportation three weeks or so to plan for the second semester, which begins on February 8th. We are asking for one minor adjustment, which will be explained in the notification that we send out. Which is if you are choosing hybrid, you can still elect to go to all remote in the second semester. However, even though you can request it at any point throughout the second semester, we're going to have two different sort of checkpoints throughout the semester. Most likely one in March and one in May where those changes will become active. And it has become difficult for buildings to manage the shifts. So we're looking for some consistency and less disruption for the second semester. Again, this will all be explained in the communication that goes out this week. We asked families to make their choice for the second semester by January 15th. Thank you, that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. Who's up next, Dr. Harrington?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Masika. So as we know, the last few weeks have been marked with increased stresses on our staffing needs due to growing infection rates and the subsequent need to quarantine staff at different times. And as we know, this reality largely influenced the difficult and recent decision to pivot to full remote until January 11th. While certainly a necessary decision, we recognize that many staff, particularly our non-instructional staff, have been impacted by these realities. Simply, many are not able to fulfill their essential job functions without students on campus. The circumstances have been such that it has required a great deal of flexibility and patience on the part of employees in the district, particularly our SEIU members. The board will note that there are several action items this evening specific to our SEIU that address various responses to a variety of situational circumstances resulting from this pandemic. These are employees that provide a great deal of support to our district as drivers, cleaners, classroom aides and monitors, maintenance and food services. We're certainly grateful for their work and for their patience as we navigate this difficult and complex time for schools. We've had to make some difficult decisions, recognizing that with each decision, different employee groups will be impacted in different ways. This evening's action items reflect agreements that we believe are mutually beneficial to the district and its SEIU employees. We believe these agreements balance fiscal responsibility with the district's continued commitment to healthy labor relations. On behalf of the district, I do want to express our gratitude to the SEIU and its leadership for its willingness to engage in difficult conversations with civility, with respect, with honesty and with reason. We remain hopeful that with each passing day, there's a growing light at the end of this pandemic and a gradual return to normalcy in the new year. So thank you, and that concludes my comments for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carlson?
Good evening, just two brief comments, just an update to the board and the community. The building condition survey, the presentation from our architects, we had initially scheduled for tonight's agenda. Due to the additional presentations for this evening, we've deferred that presentation until the January 12th board meeting. And I will reserve the remainder of my comments to the budget indicators update.
Okay, thank you, and Dr. Banlow?
Thank you, Ms. Masika, I have just several brief comments, but I do want to back up Dr. Harrington's comments with just one other comment. I want to thank all of our collective bargaining groups. Everybody is pulling together during this time of crisis and I really appreciate how the district is working together and we're all taking good care of each other, so thank you. So the first thing I want to highlight tonight is I want to thank Nora Palladino. Nora is a BHS student that organized, along with the BHS Democratic Congress, the Home for the Holidays Driving Light Show, so that brought a lot of wonderful holiday spirit, no matter what holiday you're celebrating into everybody's life, so a big thank you shout out to Nora and the BHS Democratic Congress. Second, we will be making our decision by four o'clock tomorrow regarding the impending storm. We will more than likely be having an official snow day, so get the spoons under the pillows and wear your pajamas inside out and get ready. And we'll be watching very closely for Friday. And then I just want to wish everyone a wonderful holiday season and a very happy and has to be happy and healthy new year. Thank you, Ms. Masika.
Thank you. Okay, for myself, I just also want to extend a thank you to everyone who continues to do everything that just needs to get done. It feels like, you know, we're running two separate school years at the same time where one is a COVID version and then there's still this other normal time school version and trying to make it all work. And I'm just continually impressed and proud to be here and and you know, and see the work that everyone's just doing and the commitment to our success despite everything. And so I just also want to say, you know, happy holidays to everyone. And, you know, have a little break coming up and everyone, I just, you know, enjoy that time off and just being with family and enjoying the holidays. So we will now go to our student representative. And I think it's Diana, is that who's with us today? I'm trying to.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you first of all to Dr. Banlow for putting the holiday light tour. Nora has done a really spectacular job organizing that. The Democratic Congress is really proud to stand behind her. So thank you to everybody who has signed up and please go drive the roads, it's beautiful. There are a lot of really great things happening, a lot of really great decorations. Next, Demo is also running this hold in person. What we're doing is we have compiled a website that will be posted everywhere for people to find in the coming days so that students at the high schools still know what kind of opportunities are being presented to them and what they still have the opportunity to do. And then the last one is this Friday, there is an ugly sweater competition for teachers and staff. It is being voted on for by students. And, oh, and the tech department has ordered additional hotspots for families that need it, which is so great. Seeing as we are on the schedule.
Okay, thank you so much. A lot of great things and the kids just being so creative and how they can keep students and the community engaged and that's great to see, so thank you so much for sharing all that. Okay, is my sound okay? I'm just checking in to make sure we're still good, yep, okay. We now move on to our presentations. Okay, so first up, yeah?
Go ahead, Ms.
Okay, first up, we have our COVID update, Dr. Banlow and Dr. Gosh.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Masika, Dr. Gosh and I are going to do this together. I just want to start off and then I'm going to pass the ball to Dr. Gosh. So just want to kind of paint the picture and just tell the board, remind the board that we will continue to be transparent, to give you up to date information as we get it. And also, we want the community to know that as well as we move through this this process and there is hope on the horizon with the vaccine. At the end of October, right after Halloween, the infection rate in Putnam County was 1.8%. As of December 9th, it was 8.1%. So there was a huge climb in the infection rate. And as Dr. Harrington had pointed out, you know, we did, we did have several cases several times and we did not have enough staff to staff buildings, we were opening and closing. So any decision that we make to close a school or to quarantine any individuals is made with the Putnam County Department of Health, our medical director and our school team. So we take that information very, very seriously and follow their guidance. Also, we need to not only work with the Putnam County Department of Health, but also the State Department of Health and also follow the State Education Department and Governor Cuomo's guidelines. So I'm not, tonight, we're not going to go into all the nuances of the yellow zone, the orange zone and the red zone, we'll talk a little bit about it. But the percentages in those zones for infection rates have changed. Right now, just to simplistically, which I need to make sure I can understand, is that it's tied to hospital rate, hospital capacity rate. So we're watching that. We are also looking into testing in the district. So the Putnam County Department of Health has been working with us, they are working with all of the school districts in the county to apply for a limited service lab certificate and to order some COVID tests by next, I think, Dr. Gosh, what was the name of those tests again, the binex?
Binex cards, yes.
Binex cards, so they're working on that and we are also working on it in-house. So I want to thank Dr. Gosh and also Dr. Kennedy, they've worked with our medical director, Dr. Casero, and we're also applying for a limited service lab certificate. So we can see if we can get some of the tests in the district. But there are several things that we have to be very careful and we're moving through this very, very carefully because we don't want to have to pay for the tests. Because as everybody knows, we have a $5 million budget hole right now that we hope will be filled by the federal government and Victor will talk about that a little bit later. So we're watching the monetary piece of it, that's the first careful thing that we have to tread. Second, we have to look at what type of training would we need? Who would do the testing? How would we do the testing? So we are in the process right now of going through all that. We are also talking to colleagues throughout the region to see how it's set up in their district. So we are in the process of doing that. So with that said, we cannot, apparently, we cannot test or receive the free test from the state unless we're designated as a zone. And I know everybody heard the governor say Brewster at one of the, one of his press conferences. But since then, we've not been designated a yellow zone, an orange zone or a red zone. So we're waiting. So what we did here is there's some other districts that did get tests even though they weren't designated. So we're working on several different avenues to make sure we find a way to keep our students and our staff safe. That is our first priority. We want our students, we want our kids in school. This is what we do, but we want to make sure that it is safe for our students and safe for our staff. So with that said, I want to pass now to Dr. Gosh and she's just going to share some other highlights we wanted to share with everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Banlow, we just put together a few slides to distill down all the guidance that is ever changing, all the information that's sort of thrown at us from various sources in order to share with you, the board and the community are thinking at this point and how we're approaching testing. Mr. Whalen, if you wouldn't mind the next slide, thank you. All right, so a number of things have changed since we spoke last about testing, as Dr. Banlow has mentioned. The Department of Health has been great partners since the beginning of all of this, they continue to do that. And as Dr. Banlow mentioned, we are looking at different options for obtaining the test, whether it's through the Department of Health or through our own LSL. The cost was also a major factor to us initially. That has changed a bit, if we are designated, as Dr. Banlow said, we are able to receive these test kits at no cost to us. No toss for the kit, no cost for the kits. If we are not designated, we are looking at other avenues to be proactive as best we can, but that has shifted for us. And also, the guidance has changed, not only the frequency with which testing is needed if we are designated in one of those zones, but also the percentage of students and staff that need to be tested. So all of this is an ever changing, ever shifting landscape and we are doing our best to stay apprised of what is going on and to be as proactive as possible in our planning. There are a number of things we still don't know, we could have done eight slides on things that we still don't know when it comes to testing. But in terms of the designation, is it coming or not? The tests, are we able to obtain them if we are designated or not designated? What is the timeline in obtaining those tests? And then finally, how do our families feel about this? I mean, we, before we can do anything, we, parents need to provide consent for their son or daughter to be to be tested. So we are going to, when we talk about next steps, put out a short questionnaire to get a feel for how our families are feeling about testing on campus. We, if we are able to, Mr. Whalen, if you wouldn't mind the next slide. If we are able to obtain testing kits, whether or not we're designated, if we decide that this is something that we want to do in order to keep schools open. As we mentioned before, number one, the parent has to provide the consent. If the parent provides the consent, then that student will get thrown into random sampling, depending on the designation that is, we are put under. The percentage of students and staff that need to be tested is determined based on that designation. We would administer the test and the data is reported. This is another area where the guidance has shifted. We're not reporting individualized, the latest guidance is that we're not reporting individualized student and staff positive or negativity or negative results. We are just reporting the total number of students and staff that are tested and the total number that are are positive in order to come up with that infection rate that could then determine next steps. So if this is just our thinking, this is what we know so far. And this is how we are trying to be best prepared for what possibly could be coming in January. Please know that depending, again, on the designation, depending on the guidance at that time, this is not just, okay, we do it in January and we and we move on. There are a whole number of variables that are in play that would determine how often we need to do this, is this 5% every week, is it on a rolling basis? What is, what does this all look like? But we, just in, you know, broad perspective, this is again how we're approaching moving forward with the current guidance and our, and this represents our thinking at this point. So Mr. Whalen, in the next slide, it, as I mentioned previously, we are sending out a survey this week. It's non-binding, so it's not, what, if you say yes or no to this particular survey doesn't mean that we're going to hold you to it in January if we if we are to engage in testing. We just need to know how we're feeling at this point in time. So we're going to ask parents and guardians. If your son or daughter is selected in this random sampling, are you going to say yes to testing? And are you going to allow whatever school personnel is designated and trained and qualified to do this? Are you going to say, yes, I will get my son or daughter tested, but I'm going to do that privately? Or are you dead set against it and say, absolutely not, my son or daughter will not be tested? Once we have this information, we will then be able to think through our next steps and to see where, what those next steps look like with the feel of the community behind us. Dr. Banlow?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Gosh. I'm see if the board has any questions?
I have a question, it's Carrie. When and if there's a designation? If a parent elects not to have, to allow their child to be tested, does that mean that child has to be a full remote student?
So Carrie, that's an excellent question and Dr. Gosh and I were just talking about that this afternoon, right, Dr. Gosh? So there's so many questions that we still have that if we have to, we then check with the board attorney because instead of driving ourselves crazy, we don't, you know, we, because there's so much contradictory information, so at this point, I cannot answer that question.
Yeah, we had, you said it said both, right?
That's understandable, that's understandable, I appreciate that, thanks.
And if I could just ask one, I would guess that the training and stuff would most likely go to the teachers in the, the nurses in the district that would provide the training. And do we have to do any, is this any, is this a contract thing with the labor units on whether they can be tested or not?
Yeah, we'd have to, we definitely would need to consult with the board attorney and speak to each of the labor, the labor groups as far as how we would proceed. So we'd have, that's why, you know, we want to make sure that we're proceeding correctly. Okay, any other questions on? We promise to keep everybody up to date as we move through this process and as we get new information, we will be sharing that with you. Okay, Ms. Masika, can we move?
Yes, so next is our equity update.
Okay, so for equity, we did put equity on pause due to the the COVID-19 pandemic and it was honestly, it was, it was just consuming my entire administrative team and I got to thank them so much, they've been working nonstop, they work through Thanksgiving. I hate to see that happen, but we did pause it because they just were so consumed with a lot of, with this. So we happily, we are back at it again. So we started up this week in December with our equity work, which is so critical and so important and needs to continue on. So I'm going to ask Dr. Gosh and if you could share what's been happening so far in the equity world.
Absolutely, thank you. So as Dr. Banlow mentioned, this week, we reengaged with our training with NYU. We had our root cause analysis session yesterday. So this is where NYU's Metro Center takes a deep dive into our systems, practices and policies and the resulting outcomes from those constructs and gives us objective feedback. Yesterday, we looked at at some behavior data. What we are doing this week as an administrative unit also is we're continuing with our culturally responsive and sustaining educational practices training. This is again, part of our ongoing commitment, I think we're a little bit more than halfway through these sessions. And the goal with this is capacity building. NYU does not want to be around forever, they want to build our skill sets so that we can continue to become leaders that make decisions through the lens of equity. And Mr. Whalen, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide, so this is, I think, something that can help provide some context, context and big picture to equity work. So just a reminder that all of the equity work is rooted in culturally responsive and sustaining educational framework. So this is put forth by the State Education Department, it's a research based framework. And the NYU Metropolitan Center for Research on Equity and Transformation of Schools, the group we're working with, wrote this document. So the state has said, this district, you need to do this. And we are working with NYU in order to implement it to a pretty intense degree. There are four guiding pillars to this, the first is a welcoming and affirming environment. And and I'm not going to go into each one in depth. But when we talk about welcoming and affirming environment, we're talking about really a collective responsibility to learn about student cultures and communities and social emotional learning programs, which we've spoken about over the years at board meetings in which our administrators are working hard to implement on an ongoing basis. The second pillar has to do with inclusive curriculum and assessment. So this is where we talk about incorporating current events into into instruction. Instructional strategies that are, that help differentiate and adapt to diverse learning styles and resources that are written by racially, culturally and linguistically diverse perspectives. The third pillar has to do with high expectations and rigorous instruction. And this is where we get into things like student led civic engagement, which our high school students do so well and our students actually across the board. How do we make that an opportunity that's open to everyone and really an assured experience as opposed to an elective experience? As well as student leadership opportunities, what does that look like for for different groups of students? And do all students feel as though they belong in those opportunities? And finally, the fourth is ongoing professional learning and support. So this is exactly what we're doing right now with NYU, the diversity, equity and inclusion training, where we look at things like implicit bias and really interrogate our own beliefs and assumptions when it comes to to equity and and all the constructs associated with that. So I'm certainly not doing the framework or the principles of this framework justice. But Dr. Banlow and I were speaking and perhaps in the new year, we can have a board work session on this framework. Because before we move forward with any other work, it would be great to be really grounded in what this framework is all about, the research behind it and then how that this framework manifests itself in a highly effective and highly functioning school environment.
Thank you, Dr. Gosh, and I know the board is very excited about this work and also took part in several workshops with Equity at the NISBA convention this year, so that would be something we really want to do. And it's really our hope and dream that as we move into Brewster Vision 2025 and we start to look at the strategic plan for the next five years in the district, that this will become, hopefully, with everybody on board with it, a part of that living document that needs to live and needs to be continued. And I have to say forever, because it's part of the fabric of not only the district, but of the country. So that concludes that part, that presentation, Ms. Masika, we can move into the next one whenever you're ready.
Yes, and I just want to say thank you for that presentation, Dr. Gosh, and also for the idea of the work session. I think that's a great idea. The board, you know, for its goals for this year also has, you know, school culture building and equity is part of that. And so I think absolutely, if we can, you know, little bit, when you're, when you're ready, have a work session that we can dig down into that work with you somehow to help support the efforts of everyone in the district, you know, we absolutely will look forward to doing that, so thank you.
Great, thank you, and by the way, that was Dr. Banlow's idea.
Well, thank you, Dr. Banlow. Teamwork, right, okay, so thank you both. Okay, so next up, the Brewster Vision 2025 update. Do you want to talk about that a little bit, please?
Yes, I'll do this briefly. We hate that we have to keep pushing things off, but we know what is taking up a lot of our time right now. So we had originally, members of the board, we originally planned to work on this in January. And I did talk to Kevin Kastner, our representative consultant from Cambridge. And we would love for you to consider if we can please push it to May because I'm very, being hopeful. And I have this vision of maybe having a tent outside and having people with masks and being socially distanced and coming together and doing it and coming up with our vision and our goals together, because that's really how it works better. The thought of having everybody on Zoom for hours and hours and hours, three days in a row, four days in a row. And in addition to the fact that it is very, very difficult for me right now to get my admin team or my staff out of the classrooms with everything that's happening, so we would really like to set for May right now is our placeholder for starting that work. And then having our action team kickoff in September, that would come after the committee comes up with the the goals for the next five years. So hopefully, the board, I want to see if you have any questions, if you're okay with that as we move forward.
Well, I do agree, I mean, having done this work, I mean, now it's been six years ago. And I agree, I think in person, it absolutely is a different experience, it's more engaging, the conversation is is just, it's more alive and encouraging of people to really participate in creating it, and I think this is really important work. You know, we're really, we're literally setting the plan for the next five years. So I do agree, meeting in person is more beneficial. So I do agree, meeting in person is is more beneficial. I personally, I hate that we have to keep putting it off. But I think that, you know, we didn't ask for COVID, and I think the work is too important to just try to get through it somehow. So I mean, personally, I'm okay with seeing how we are in the spring, and hopefully, at that point, we can come up with a better solution. I don't know how anyone else in the board feels. I mean, does everyone else feel maybe it's more, it's just more strongly about continuing in a different way, or?
I agree. I think it's good to move it on to May.
I agree with that as well.
Yeah, it's too much hands-on work to do via Zoom.
Yeah, and the representative said you really can't. He said it really wouldn't function on Zoom. So I'm all for waiting till till May.
Okay, thank you so much. This is so important. I don't want everybody to go in and out of it, just to be there 100% is so critical. Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Maseka. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we have our budget indicators update. Mr. Carlson?
Okay, good evening. I'll be as brief as I can. The updates are actually encouraging. So we just learned of the TRS pension contribution rate. So in November, they typically give us a range. So the range for next year is between nine and a half percent, 10%. So this current year's rate was actually nine and a half percent, which means that the rate is not going up significantly for next year. That's, you know, very encouraging, because in typical years, we've always been fearful of a spike in in TRS contribution rates. So we're encouraged by this news. I I find it almost ironic, because the the plan ended, its investment portfolio only gained three and a half percent. The target rate for the fund is 7%. So they they didn't meet their target, yet they didn't increase the contribution rate. So that that usually doesn't happen. But I'm not going to ask any more questions. I'm just encouraged by it. In terms of health insurance, the Brewster is part of a consortium with another 17 school districts in the region. The premium increase for our health insurance is just one and a half percent. Again, more encouraging news as health insurance premiums for other competitive plans are usually increasing closer to 8% each year. So two, you know, two pieces of encouraging news for for our employee benefits costs. But as Dr. Banlow mentioned earlier, both of these items pale in comparison to the potential state aid reduction that that we're facing. And we actually just, just this past month, actually got even more discouraging news from the state in that they have notified all of the school districts in New York State that the state would not be providing transportation aid for the period of March through June, when students were in remote instruction. So just to put it in context, Brewster's transportation aid, the portion of our state aid that is earmarked for transportation, is about $3.6 million. And about a third of the school year, we were not providing transportation services. So the state is refusing to pay about $1.2 million, or a third of our transportation aid for the 1920 school year. So we're adding that now on top of the $4 million that they've identified for this current 2021 school year. And it's just, of course, it's just making matters worse. Needless to say, it's incredibly frustrating. The state has indicated that they would notify us in November of of an update. They didn't. And we're just hoping that federal action will provide some relief to states. Again, it's our concern that even still, it will not be sufficient to cover what what we've lost. So that that's my budget indicators update, our our first budget presentation. We're starting earlier, even earlier this year than the year prior, January 12th, which is our for our next board meeting. So we'll be presenting an update, really, you know, just showing the environment and also just a reflection on some of the challenges that we faced in the past. I think it was the last last board meeting, we had conversations about what prior years looked like when we had significant reductions in state aid. During those times, it was a different environment, because it was pre-tax cap. So there was a tax levy, you know, far greater than what's allowable now that helps to, you know, mitigate the loss in state aid. But I think it'll be helpful just for context to show what, you know, what we've experienced in the past and and specific to Brewster in the 1011 year and also in the 1213 year. So that'll be part of the presentation on January 12th. And that concludes my update.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carlson. Anyone have any questions or comments? The board? No, okay.
To say, we just continue the advocacy, I believe the Dr. Banlow and Ms. Trow just added the advocacy section to our page. So I've asked people to actively search it and send it out. I know the district has done it. I was on a meeting with, I think, Westchester Putnam. And back at the mid of November, they've already sent out over over 15,000 letters to our representatives. So if we just keep up the pressure, who knows? I mean, anything's better than nothing. So I just ask people to push the advocacy.
Yes. And if I'll just add to what Scott just said. And thank you, Lauren, our district clerk. She's doing a phenomenal job at keeping org things organized despite COVID. And so for the community, please check out on our board page, there's a link on the left, a tab, which will bring you to our advocacy page, and there's a link in there that you can click on, and it'll take you to these letters as well, and things you can do to help advocate and support our work in trying to, you know, reach out to Albany. So just thank you for bringing that up and for the community to go check that out. And we need all the help we can get. Okay, we now move on to our pupil personnel services goals. Ms. Kennedy, Ms. Knotts, and Mr. Stolachi?
So Ms. Maseka, if I can just introduce them? I'm just extremely proud to present to you tonight our PPS department. We have Dr. Elizabeth Kennedy, our Director of Pupil Personnel Services, our Assistant Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Ms. Sarah Knotts, and also Assistant Director of Pupil Personnel Services, Mr. Paul Stolachi. They're going to be sharing their goals this evening. They have been working on these goals since the start of the school year. And of course, their goals fall indeed under the umbrella of the board and district goals, as well as their own specific department goals. Dr. Kennedy?
Hey, good evening. Thank you so much, Dr. Banlow, for our introduction. And thank you, Board of Trustees, for this opportunity to present to you tonight about our People Personnel Services Department and our goals for this school year. Okay, if we could go on to the next slide, Mr. Reilly? Okay, so, Dr. Banlow, thank you again for our introduction of us PPS administrators. I will also introduce some of our key district-wide leaders in the PPS department. We are very fortunate to have these three professionals with us. They are absolutely instrumental to our work and our progress towards the goals that we set out for last year, as well as the ones that we will discuss that we've set out for this year. So Mrs. Nicole Gomez-Rojo is our bilingual school psychologist and also CFC chairperson. Ms. Allison Summer is our board certified behavior consultant. And Mrs. Nina Kinsinger is our CFC chairperson, who also serves as our key liaison with at a district placement. So as I've mentioned, the team of professionals is incredibly monumental in our efforts as a department. We've worked cohesively together in achieving the goals that we've set out and are continuously aiming high and expanding our efforts. In this slide? Okay, so just to recap on our goals from last school year, we focused a lot last year on supporting student social emotional development across grades K through 12, as well as expanding our multi-tiered systems of support and promoting access to these for all students. And also improving our practices with promoting education of students in the least restrictive environment, otherwise known as LRE. So while we have identified new goals for this particular year, these continue to be at the heart of our daily work. Next slide? Okay, so three areas that we've focused on for this 202021 school year. And again, we are looking at what we've done last year and you know, trying to to build upon that, but looking at the inherent challenges of this particular school year and everything about it that has been unprecedented in a lot of ways. Our primary goal for this year has been to support adaptation to new instructional models by consistently engaging students, both academically and emotionally amidst the challenges of COVID-19. And we'll go on to share a little bit about each of these further. Also, at the heart of our work this year is promoting culturally responsive practices and cultural competency. And also to build overall capacity throughout our PPS department. So these goals are developed to achieve our PPS department mission of supporting all students across all buildings. We work in partnership with our building administrator colleagues, as well as teachers, counselors, related service providers, nurses, and other staff district-wide, again, to assist students both in general and special education programming. And this year, more than ever, we collaborate extensively to help our students at this immediate time, while also improving our practices to benefit students and the district in the long term. Next slide? Okay, so to share a little bit more about our first goal. So focusing on improving our practices and strategizing ways to keep all of our students engaged, both academically and emotionally, regardless of which instructional model they are participating in. So as we know, we have students who are participating in fully remote programs. We have many students who are participating in the hybrid model, students participating in in-person instruction. And sometimes we've needed, as we are right now, we're pivoting between these. So we're really trying to focus on helping our students to become as adaptable as possible and to stay engaged regardless of any changes with that. Next slide? So why are we focusing on this? The extended closure from last spring 2020 brought many unprecedented challenges and also growth opportunities. So one of the growth opportunities that the situation has prompted us to reflect on is how we are typically engaging students. And we think that one of the blessings in disguise of of all the challenges that we've had over this past year is that this will help us to reflect and also to develop new and innovative ways to engage students instructionally and socially, you know, even when the day comes that we're back in school five days a week in person. Okay, next slide? So one of the reasons why we're focusing on engagement, there is a lot of research that shows that when students are engaged in their learning, they tend to stay more on task, they become more motivated. And so we know that a lot of the disruptions that we've had with having to go between in-person instructions, remote instruction can inherently be difficult for students. So we want to do everything that we can to help find ways to keep students in the game, to help them to feel connected, to feel that they are being successful in their learning setting. Because we believe that that will help them stay on task longer and also have the inspiration to continue to do more. Okay, next slide? We also feel that by helping our students to stay connected, to, you know, be on task, whether they're at home or in person, it helps them also to get through this very difficult situation, which is developing their adaptability and their resilience, which will benefit them in the long term. Next slide? And so how are we doing this? Through a multitude of ways. And again, this is work that we're doing in the short term on in our daily interactions, our our daily endeavors, as well as long-term projects and other initiatives that we are implementing. So what we really focus on a lot is building connections, relationships in a district-wide sense of community, constantly in trying to enhance school-to-home collaboration, collaboration within teams, and a focus on supporting students by a whole child approaches. We are continuously consulting with all of our educators to try to find ways to make sure that our students are engaged across learning models and continuously providing resources and support, such as professional development opportunities as needed. And we're paying very close attention to the equity considerations that we've been presented with as a result of the COVID-19 crisis. So we are frequently looking at individual student situations and evaluating student circumstances, their needs, and really trying to pay close attention to figuring out ways to ensure equitable opportunities for all of our students. And again, make sure that all of our students are engaged and feeling successful and connected to their school community. And so on that note, I will turn it over to Mr. Stolachi, who will share more about goal two.
All right, thank you, Dr. Kennedy. All right, good evening, board members and Brewster community. As Dr. Kennedy shared, I'm going to be speaking a little bit on our second goal as a PPS department, which is focused on promoting culturally responsive practices and developing greater cultural competency within the whole of our district. Dr. Banlow and Dr. Gosh actually spoke on this particular topic just a short while ago. So I'll add a little bit more to what they shared. One of the things we recognize here in Brewster is that a culture, in this case, our school culture is not defined by a universal set of characteristics, but is rather something more fluid and complex. So we believe that by pursuing and embracing practices that are culturally responsive, that we're not just pursuing another initiative to what may seem like an already full plate as we tend to be engaged in quite a bit here in the district. But rather, we're working to better address the plate that we have right here in front of us. So what we seek is really to improve upon the intersection and operationality of our systems district-wide, such as our building MTSS system, our restorative practices, our positive behavior supports, and our general pursuit of curriculum and standards. Next slide, if you could? Thank you. So in our aims, what we're looking to address is identifiable barriers so that we may grow in our individuality, but also flourish in our diversity. One of the things we're looking to continue to provide through our services in the PPS department, as well as the district, is a great provision of equality, equity, and accommodation to our students. But we're also addressing the systemic barriers that may be at play. And this is a particular spotlight shift for us going forward as we pursue this year and subsequent years. Next slide, if you could? Mr. Whalen, could you go to the next slide, please? Thank you. So we ultimately engage in this work to create a better student-centered learning experience, one that affirms identities, prepares students for learning, develops connections, elevates voices, and empowers others as agents of change. Next slide, if you could? And one of the ways that we intend to pursue our goal work this year is to provide explicit attention to three elements of very simple and singular question. What can I do? And this is where we'll provide support with the people we work alongside in their growth and development of self as we navigate and influence action within our school system. And hopefully, at, you know, subsequent meetings, as we unpack this more, we'll have a greater understanding into this work of what can I do through our equity collaborative that we're undertaking here in the district. So at this time, I do thank you for allowing me to speak to this goal, but I'm going to segue over to Ms. Knotts so that she can speak to you a little bit further on our third goal for the department.
Great, thank you, Mr. Stolachi. Good evening, board. It's lovely to see everyone this evening. Our third goal is to build capacity through our PPS department. By building capacity, we mean that we seek to strengthen the skills, processes, and resources needed to fulfill our district's vision. Can we please have the next slide? So why is building capacity one of our goals? Our department embraces a culture of continuous improvement. We are always considering not only how we can improve our internal practices, but also how our practices interact with systems within and outside our district. All right, we can go to the next slide. And how are we building capacity through our PPS department? In MTSS meetings, we are working to identify and describe intervention resources and instructional methodologies to coach instructional staff on implementing tiered interventions and to explain to families to coach instructional staff on implementing tiered interventions and to explain to families available supports. In hiring new staff, we continue to apply our critical eye to resumes and as well, continue to seek candidates who align to our Brewster Vision 2025. In addition, we continue to seek qualified bilingual candidates who can work with us to reach our Spanish-speaking population. Through professional development, we provide staff with meaningful and relevant training supportive of our progressive efforts. Our department trainings this year have spanned topics from strategies for differentiating and accommodating in the virtual environment to therapeutic crisis intervention training. And in addition, we actively seek to connect staff to relevant training through BOCs. With our McKinney End to Unfoster Care processes, we have worked this past year to streamline our identification and follow-up systems. And as well, our department has worked with community agencies and our district office to ensure these students receive the support they need. Lastly, and perhaps most importantly, in our CSE meetings, we are committed to promoting the least restrictive environment for students. As well, we worked in our CSCs to promote in-district programs and resources, which allows for more students to be serviced within district. And on that note, I will hand the microphone back to Dr. Kennedy to.
Thank you, Ms. Knox. Okay, so through our collective efforts to support students across all of these areas, we continuously aim to cultivate our overall school community to help our students experience success and feel inspired to keep achieving and reach the goal of graduation, as well as independence, success, and happiness after they leave our Brewster schools. And we would not be able to achieve all of this without the support of our district leaders and our Board of Trustees. So again, thank you so much for allowing us to present tonight, your ongoing support to the PPS department on behalf of our students, and we wish everyone here a happy and healthy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kennedy and her great team. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was great, very, very detailed and informative. Thank you so much for taking the time to put that together for us. Okay, so we move on now to our technology goals. Dr. Banlow, did you want to do the introductions again?
Yes, if I may. Okay, another, another point of pride for the Brewster Central School District is our technology department. And I have to say, when I first came to the district and I was given a tour and I toured, the tech department is like a well-oiled machine. And I just continued to be impressed. They have really lifted us through this entire COVID pandemic with remote learning. So I'd like to introduce our Director of Technology and Innovation, Mr. Jim Trelor, and also our Director of Technology and Network Support and Operation, Mr. Bob Valdez. Jim?
Good evening. Thank you for giving us the, the time to present the goals for this school year for the Technology and Innovation Department. I want to begin by talking about how all of our work, the work that we do is really engaged. It's really filtered through the vision that was set forth by the District Digital Learning Committee. And that is that the district will engage all learners in authentic problem and project-based learning, inspire and empower them to ask and answer questions of personal and public interest, and be responsible digital citizens. And further, the work that the whole department does, and we do have an incredible team that supports all of the students and staff throughout the district. And they're driven by the mission that, that we put together as a department to provide exceptional support and maintain a secure, dependable network with agile and innovative tools to inspire staff and students in pursuit of lifelong learning. And without a doubt, learning in 2020 has relied on technology more than ever before. It really has changed the way students learn in class, emphasize that even more. It has enabled them to learn from home and even modified how they learn from home. Just created opportunities for anytime, anywhere learning. And teachers have come up with new and innovative content to get students actively engaged. We talked about the engagement that Dr. Kennedy and her staff, where her, her team talks about. A lot of that can be driven by the different ways that the, the tools are being used over the technology. And while we do talk about a lot of the difficulties that we've had with the pandemic, it has presented a lot of opportunities and some benefits. And one that I think is really important is it has forced us to focus on issues of equity and enabling students, making sure that we are having, providing students with access to internet at home. Before this, students may have not been able to do any homework. They could come in, we do digital learning here, they couldn't do it at home. Now, because of this, the pandemic, we've been forced to saying, oh, we need to really help those families that can't provide it. It has also enabled more equity through providing more tools for differentiation. So technology really does help drive those opportunities to be able to provide different types of learning opportunities for different students. This, we have also seen a greater use of digital formative assessment tools. So again, talking to the, the emphasis on engagement, we have a much more difficult time to really understand how students understand the work that we're doing in class and not only just are they engaging, but did they really understand it? And so those digital formative assessment tools are key. And it has forced us as a department to focus even more on data privacy and cybersecurity. And that really drives our two initial goals that we'd like to talk about tonight. So one is to continue to the work towards ED Law 2D compliance. We spoke to the board last year about the work that we already had in place throughout, up until last year, on a number of the requirements of ED Law 2D. The, you have before you on the agenda, the data security and privacy policy that was developed in, with respect to the, this new law and the requirements surrounding that. And the two main things that Bob and I are going to be speaking to are the third-party contracts and the alignment of our policies and procedures around the NIST cybersecurity framework. So first off, every vendor must sign a data privacy agreement tied to our parent's Bill of Rights. And we have been working tirelessly since September on this. On, if vendors won't sign this, we won't use them. And even if it's free software, we've invested in a tool that allows us to really look at all educational software that's being used throughout the district. So we know all the 75 applications that we pay for and we purchase, and we can know those are the ones we need to reach out. But this really kind of looks at, at all of the traffic. And as you can see, over the last 12 months, there were 1,200, almost 1,300 unique applications that teachers and students are using. And we need to then dig in, see if they use personally identifiable information. If they do, then we need to reach out, ask them to sign this privacy agreement. And just a kind of a reminder on some of those things that we're asking of these vendors. And that is if you use student personally identifiable information, that you're not going to use it for commercial purposes, that the data is protected while it's at rest, they're training their staff. When everything is all said and done, they'll delete the data. And also that their subcontractors, everybody down the line is going to adhere to this. It's really putting privacy first with the process of any instructional tool that we use. So the, Bob is here to now speak to the second component, which is bringing all of our department policies and procedures in line with the NIST framework.
Thanks, Jim. Good evening, everyone. So this is a quick slide of the NIST framework. This is the framework that the state has adopted for cybersecurity. On the left-hand side, you'll see the main five functions. And on the right-hand side, there's 23 categories branched off those five functions. So what you're not seeing on the slide is that there's over 100 controls behind these categories that are really the, kind of the substance of the framework. And that's what we'll be working on, the policy development that support those controls throughout the year. This is a tremendous amount of work and a tremendous amount of policies that will be, have to be developed to support this framework. So Jim and I have already started meeting weekly. We've attended training sessions on how to write these types of policies. And we've, we've also received some guidance from our local regional information center as far as the state is really looking for us to concentrate on this first function, identity, and the corresponding categories and the corresponding controls. There's over 30 controls just in that one function, and that's a tremendous amount of policy work right there. So that's really where we'll be, we'll be starting with this particular goal. But again, tremendous amount of work. And we've done a tremendous amount of work in this cybersecurity realm, but really, these are just relating to the policies and procedures that support what we've already put in place. If you can go to the next slide. So in addition to our policy work, we're also working on a self-assessment of how what we're already doing in cybersecurity relates back to the NIST framework and also to what the state is developing as far as a target profile for cybersecurity. So the state has actually not produced this target profile yet. We've recently reached out to, again, the Regional Information Center. They're working with the other regional information centers in the state to produce a target profile. But Jim and I are forging ahead in a self-assessment before that even gets produced, just to see kind of where we stand. It's going to help us review our own policies, find areas that we need to do improvement on. It'll also help us prioritize those areas that we need improvement and where to put our resources. Thank you, Jim.
I do want to make a point that those are small key policies. So the Policy Committee and the rest of the board don't have to think that there's going to be all these policies coming out that you're going to have to review and look at. It's really more of what are those things that drive and govern what we do? Which a lot of that work has already been, like, it's in place, just not in a formal way. So it does drive a lot of the work that we do, and we're finding that a lot of the things are in there in line, but it really does help to put and make it formalized. So our third goal is to continue to support teachers and students in their hybrid learning and hybrid and remote learning. So our first thing that I focused on and I spoke to already is that we distributed over 115 mobile hotspots to families. We identified that many families that did not have any access to internet at home. We worked to look to other low-cost providers in the community, really helping community, community members to get those. And where they couldn't, then we provided them with a hotspot. The other support that we've given is to add on a number of tools, Screencast by Kami, NearPod, EdPuzzle, to really support the, the learning that's happening in the, in the school district. And all of those tools really help to better differentiate the instruction for, for learners. The other component to this is hardware. So we have this IPA, which is before you on your agenda this, tonight as well, that helps to drive the purchases that we make. And we engage the Digital Learning Committee to review where, what direction we're going with that. And in the spring, we decided, hey, with this remote learning, we really need to change the devices that teachers have. So we bought more powerful and larger Chromebooks and laptops. And all of that, again, is supported by this, the replacement cycle. I do want to kind of point out and kind of review of what, how we look at this for the Chromebooks. We look at, and this may look a little, a little cluttered, but it's, you know, for what grade, what year, end of what year, how old is that device? And it kind of drives where we, our goal is to have students replace that device after four years. But you'll see that at the end of the 2018 school, 2017, 2018 school year, the students' devices were already a year and a half. And that means that right now, by the end of this school year, our eighth graders, 11th graders, and 12th graders have the oldest devices. And so some of the problems that we've been seeing really reflect that. And so for our IPA, the one that we hope that you will approve for tonight, for next year, we are reconfiguring that to now not just purchase new ones for kindergarteners, fifth graders and ninth graders, but now also including the 12th graders. So that they don't have, if we have another year of full remote learning, that they are not going to be suffering with a five-and-a-half-year-old device that they're already having some problems with. So just trying to make sure that those devices get replaced in a timely fashion. And we do have a replacement cycle for all of our hardware, whether it's the desktop, servers, switches, a couple of big purchases that we have to really map out and say, hey, in the years to come, we really need, you know, some of these things do cost a lot of money. And we need to make sure that that's part of our plan. For this year, we also purchased some new document cameras to help with the instruction in the classroom. This kind of gives you an idea of some different ways, helps be a little more flexible and agile in the classroom. We're right now reviewing getting second monitors for teachers. Because when you're talking about being able to see the students, see the content, be able to monitor their screens, do all of that, it helps to have a little bit more viewing surface than just a one monitor. So looking to do that, the students have said they're having some difficulty hearing when they're at home and in the classroom. So we're looking at some conference speakers, some different ways to support that instruction, to make sure that the, we're there to make the, the learning easier for, for students and for teachers. All right, and that really sums up those three goals, the kind of the, the main focus that we've been working on from the beginning of the year and that we continue to do. And really to be here to support the staff, the students, and the teachers in the work that they do every day, so.
Thank you, Mr. Trelor. Thank you, Mr. Valdez. A lot of work behind the scenes, it's so great to, that you shared that with us. Thank you, Ms. Masika. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much, and thank you also for that presentation, also very detailed and informative. And I personally appreciate, you know, your, your forward thinking and already knowing where, what our needs are going to be in the future, so we can plan for them in advance and not just have to deal with it unexpectedly. So it's great, thank you. Okay, so I think we can now move on to our public remarks. Carrie, if there are any that specifically relate to any action items, I don't know if we got any that came in specific to action items this, this round.
No, I don't think we have any for that.
Okay, so that we did get some in that we'll address later on in our second round of public remarks that came in. And just for the community that is on this evening, we always have two portions of our agenda where we read any emails that come in related to whether it's action items or anything else in general. So, okay, so we can then move on to our action items. And first up this evening is approval of 2021-22 installment purchase agreement IPA with Southern Westchester BOCs for the purchase of technology devices.
Yeah, so as Jim just described, this is critical to the delivery of instruction. This would represent year three of our installment purchase agreement plan. Part of our long-range financial plan that we shared at our last board meeting is that our commitment to replenishing these devices as they inevitably become obsolete. So moving to next year's budget, we recognize it's going to be extremely limited. So we already began taking measures this year in order to make sure that we can earmark some funds for this IPA. So you may recall, included in our 2021, our current year budget, we included a, an allocation to the capital fund for the completion of a, a small capital project. Recognizing around August that this year was going to be extremely difficult, we decided to defer that project. And we intend to restore those funds to the general fund in 2122, making this IPA budget neutral for, for next year's budget.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for this item, please?
This is Daisy, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second.
This is Jason, I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this item from the board? I'll just say thank you, Victor, for, for explaining and clarifying how you've thought through the cost of this and how it'll be, like you said, budget-neutral for next year. Because, yeah, I'm, I'm going to enjoy the holidays and then can't wait to see the presentation we get, we get back. So at least this much was good, thank you. But anyone else have anything they'd like to add? Okay, hearing nothing, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sonia, myself, yes? With no objections, motion passes seven zero. With no objections, motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next action item, number two, approval of tax receivers reports and tax collection reassignment.
Yes, this is a procedural resolution which allows the county to take over tax collection after the town's tax collection period ends in October. So we present that to you for your approval. And also of note, there was concern this year about tax collections and specifically with our commercial businesses. And as you can see, the tax collections for this year are consistent with those over the past decade.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Jason, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jason, and a second.
Carrie, I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Carrie. Questions or comments on this item? Right, hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sonia, myself, yes. No objections, motion passes seven zero. Action item number three, acceptance of donations, A, BEF for instructional technology equipment, B, Farmland Trust Foundation for Child Nutrition Department.
Yes, so I'd like to, of course, thank the Brewster Education Foundation and also Mr. Tim Wallach, who really drove this donation to the district. Mr. Wallach, if you remember, also donated to the district last year for resurfacing our tennis court. So we're extremely appreciative of his donation and the new partnership with the Brewster Education Foundation. You, you'll see in the, in the letter from the Brewster Education Foundation of their intent to create a matching gifts campaign in the future, which Mr. Wallach brought to the Brewster Education Foundation, and we're thankful that he did that. The other donation is a grant that was requested and approved for Kathy Hancock. So I just want to acknowledge her and her work and her department. Kathy has received thousands of dollars for the district through her advocacy. So I just want to thank Kathy Hancock for her work.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for this item, please?
Eric, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second.
This is Scott. I'll make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board on this item?
I would just like to thank everybody involved for all the work and the donation to the district.
I would also like to thank everybody involved as well. Thank Ms. Masika.
Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Okay, action item number four, approval of tax refunds and budget amendments, number two and number three.
Yes, so these have been recalculated by our treasurer, reviewed by our attorneys, and approved for payment. You'll note a twenty-eight thousand dollar impact on our current year revenues. We do each year have tax refunds that we make, as well as a twenty-three thousand dollar refund from our Tax Cert Reserve. Budget amendments, number two and three, reflect the drawdown from the Tax Cert Reserve to make those payments. And budget amendment, number three, reflects an increase in our instructional technology budget, so that we could purchase those Chromebooks with the proceeds from the BEF donation.
Okay, great. Thank you. May I have a motion for this item, please?
It's Francine. I make the motion.
Thank you, and a second.
This is Daisy. I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments on this item from the board? Hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Sonia, myself, yes. With none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Okay, we move on to action item number five, approval of records retention and disposition schedule.
Yeah, so this is probably the only function that is more tedious and boring than than Dr. Gosh being the Policy Committee Chairperson. So New York State has consolidated a number of records retention schedules into one beautiful four-hundred-and-eleven-page document. There's no substantive changes from the previous schedule that were subjected to School District's ED-1. So we're required to approve this new records retention and disposition schedule.
Great. Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
This is Daisy. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Daisy, and a second.
Jason, I'll second.
Thank you, Jason. Questions or comments from the board?
Just waiting for Dr. Gosh to defend the good name of the Policy Committee.
Anytime now.
She's got nothing.
Policy, you're up next.
Okay, um, anyone else? No. We can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Okay, action item number six, approval of policies, second read, five-six-seven-six, privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data, five-seven-four-one, drug and alcohol testing for bus drivers, seven-two-four-zero and seven-two-four-zero-dash-R student records, seven-five-three-zero, child abuse and maltreatment, one-one-one-zero, school board legal status and authority, one-one-one-zero-R, social media use by board members.
Thank you, Ms. Masika. Mr. Grutzner, I think we may need to have a policy or a agenda adjustment in our next policy meeting. All of Mr. Carlson's section could be up for reading. All right, so we put forward these four policies and two regulations for your second read approval. As always, they are revised with the advice of legal counsel and are recommended to you by our esteemed Policy Committee. Please note that policy, eleven-ten, was revised from its first read based on the presentation from legal counsel and the subsequent discussion at our November board meeting.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Carrie, and a second.
This is Eric. I'll second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Okay, action item number seven, approval of resolution for tenure appointment, approval of resolution for tentative winter interscholastic sports.
Yes, if I can just maybe start with the second resolution, which simply establishes that the appointment of our winter coaches is contingent upon the start of a season. While this evening's consent agenda notes the appointment of our winter coaches, this resolution establishes that their appointment is predicated upon the start of a season, which at this moment in time is January fourth. More importantly, the first resolution recommends our middle school assistant principal, Christian Hernandez, for tenure. And I believe our middle school principal, John Clark, is with us this evening, and he has the privilege in sharing his recommendation for her tenure.
Thank you, everybody. Before I start on my comments, I'd like to just give a shout out to our student government at the middle school. Despite not having too many students in school this year, we initiated a Toys for Tots drive, and we were able to somehow raise over two hundred toys in the past couple of weeks by having a drop box outside of the school. So I just think during these times, it's a, it's a little bit of good news that I'd like to share with everybody. They're doing a great job. So thank you for that. So good evening, everybody, and it is a great pleasure and an honor for me to be here tonight to recognize Mrs. Hernandez on receiving her tenure. In four years of working together, we have been through quite a bit, and I could not have asked for a better partner. Leading schools is not easy, especially during these times, and it requires a lot of people to work together. Mrs. Hernandez and I have a true partnership. We are in continuous contact, consulting with each other on how to best approach problems. I very much value her guidance, team approach, and always a positive attitude. Mrs. Hernandez is a student-centered in every sense. Whenever making a decision that affects a student in any way, she puts the student's needs first, asking, what is the need and how do we meet that need? Because of this thinking, she has established herself as someone to whom all students feel comfortable reaching out when they need assistance or support. This has been especially critical for multilingual learners as they look for guidance. Prior to last academic year, all Brewster administrators read the book Leaders Eat Last by Simon Sinek. The gist of this book is that as leaders, we are here to serve those whom we lead. This is necessary to build trust and confidence in our leadership. Mrs. Hernandez embraces this philosophy and has proven herself time and time again as a leader who definitely eats last, if at all. In fact, we have not eaten many times together. Mrs. Hernandez always puts others first, listening to their concerns with understanding. She problem solves however she can to support our staff and works long days and sometimes on weekends to get the job done right. She also makes sure to communicate all decisions in a thoughtful way, so people understand the rationale that goes into the decisions that affect them. I could spend a lot of time listing her accomplishments, but I'll just point out a few that stand out. From the start, Mrs. Hernandez has embraced our PBIS work involving staff and students to find ways to encourage, to encourage positive behaviors. Through her leadership, our PBIS team initiated Bear Box to make sure students were regularly recognized for doing the right thing. She also encouraged students to initiate grade-level presentations on various topics, including disabilities, cultural competence, anti-bullying, health and nutrition, and many, many more. She has spearheaded school-wide film festivals to engage students about difficult topics such as racial injustice and equity. She has given students permission to be proud of their heritage and culture, which has fostered a culture of understanding and respect throughout our Wells community. On top of that, on top of all that she has on her plate, helping navigate us through this difficult time, Mrs. Hernandez has also embarked upon doctoral work through the University of South Carolina, where she is focusing on ensuring equity for students. More than anything, I value the friendship that Mrs. Hernandez and I have cultivated. As a fellow Met's fan, we both understand that there can be long, difficult periods of hopelessness without much light at the end of the tunnel. Despite this, or maybe because of this, we are able to laugh often, even during difficult times. We've established a great deal of mutual respect and trust during our time working together, and I couldn't imagine doing this job without her. Mrs. Hernandez, thank you for all you do, for all you have done for our school or community, and for me personally. And congratulations on your well-deserved tenure. Thank you. Let's go Mets.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, for your heartfelt speech. That I'm so touched by your words, and yes, being a Met fan has prepared us for this job. I want to thank Dr. Bammo, Dr. Gosh, Mr. Carlson, Dr. Harrington, Board of Education trustees, Mrs. Masika, Mrs. Cunningham, Mr. Grutzner, Mr. Seaman, Mrs. Santos, Mr. Whitehead, and Mrs. Jimenez Vasquez. Thank you. A special shout out to the Wells family and to the entire Brewster community. Thank you.
So before I let the board add their comments as well, I do need to get a motion for this item.
This is Scott. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Scott, and a second.
This is Francine. A second.
Thank you, Francine. Okay, go ahead, board. Take it away. If anyone wants to add anything to what was already said, I'll, I'll just say congratulations shortly. And a lot of great, great insight from Mr. Clark that was shared and you know, thank you for everything that you've been doing in the district. And I think it's, it's great. It's great to know we have such wonderful people that work here. I don't know if anybody else wants to add anything. We're going to vote shortly.
Yeah, I would also offer my congratulations. It's well deserved. My kids were not lucky enough. They were already out of the school at that time. But my visits to the school and other people I know, it's all thoroughly enjoyed. So thank you for the support of our students, especially at this time.
I would just add to, on, on, you know, having the benefit of having the tours for board members, it's really obvious what it, what the great teamwork that you have, that you and Mr. Clark have. It's, it's really quite obvious. And as a parent of student, of a student in Wells and students who have left Wells, it's, it's apparent from, from our perspective as well. So congratulations.
I also want to say congratulations. So well deserved. You are a true leader for all students, Christian. Congratulations.
Okay, we can go to the vote for this action item. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, despite her being a Met fan.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, the motion passes seven to zero, and we can just give another applause. Yeah.
Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we move on now to our next action item. Number eight, approval of a side letter of agreement with SEIU for part-time transportation employees, B memorandum of agreement with SEIU to forego one-year retirement notification.
Yes, thank you. This first side letter approves payment for part-time employees who were directed to work on two separate days in which the Transportation Department was closed. And our second MOA simply extends the deadline for retirement notification in our SEIU, allowing an employee who may be considering retirement to still receive their contractual benefit of unpaid sick time without providing the one-year notice, which is a provision noted in their contract. Rather, the district's extending such notice to February twenty-eighth for notification of retirement for this school year.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
This is Daisy. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, and a second.
This is Jason. I'll second.
Thank you, Jason. Questions or comments from the board on this item? Hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, the motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Action item number nine, approval of resolution of salary freezes for all non-union personnel.
Yes, historically, the district has approved the salary range for potential pay increases for the following year at its December meeting for all of our non-union employees. Given the financial reality and budget shortfall that this pandemic has created for our school district, this resolution freezes salaries for all non-union personnel, twenty-four employees in total, for the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. It's important to note that all other employees are subject to the provisions in their collective bargaining agreement, and as such, any pay freezes would need to be collectively bargained through negotiations.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
Carrie, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Carrie, and a second.
Eric, I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. Questions or comments from the Thank you, Eric. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing none. We can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Action item number 10, approval of resolution and memorandum of agreement with SEIU regarding payment for part-time employees.
Yes, I'd like to read a statement and reiterate what Dr. Harrington said earlier. It is with appreciation that we recommend to the Board of Education this memorandum of agreement, which was negotiated in good faith with the SEIU to provide economic certainty to all of its unit members. This MOA was necessary because provisions within the existing collective bargaining agreement do not provide payment to part-time unit members unless services are rendered. The impending school closure presents a situation when many services provided by our SEIU staff will not be required since many job functions are predicated on student attendance. It is a testament to the solidarity of the SEIU that full-time employees have agreed to share in this sacrifice for the betterment of part-time employees and the bargaining unit as a whole. As for the district, as I mentioned earlier, potential state aid reduction in excess of $4 million continues to loom during these times of economic uncertainty. The district simply cannot afford to pay for services not being rendered in the face of such an extraordinary financial hardship. This MOA holds the district harmless from a financial perspective while allowing the SEIU to redistribute contractually obligated payments in a more equitable manner across its members. It is our sincere hope that the district can continue to develop its future COVID-19 testing program so that students and staff can resume in-person operations on January 11th. We look forward to partnering with the SEIU in order to achieve this goal so that future school closures can be avoided because we all recognize the importance of in-person learning for our students and their families. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
This is Scott. I make the motion.
Thank you, Scott. And a second?
This is Francine. I'll make the second.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
I would just like to thank everybody involved, the administration and the bargaining unit for working on the best of everybody. I know it's a difficult time, but I appreciate all their efforts.
Agreed. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes, with none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Okay, we move on to the consent agenda.
Just again, a congratulations to Ms. Hernandez. Well-earned. Her tenure recommendation is again noted on this evening's consent agenda.
Thank you. I need a motion for this item, please.
This is Daisy. I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Daisy. And a second?
This is Jason, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the board?
Sonia, you have a question?
Yes.
So, Dr. Harrington, in the action items, we approved the list of coaching positions, and the modified coaches were included in there, but I do not see them on the consent agenda. Can you, I don't know if I missed something as far as what the status of modified sports was, or how does that work out?
Yeah, it's a good question. Thank you for asking. We do not yet have a date or any indication of the start of a winter modified sports season, so that's why we do not have any coaches appointed. We can make that appointment, of course, in our January meeting if in fact there is any modified season that would begin after January 4th and after the next board meeting on January 12th.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we can go to the vote. Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
I abstain.
Okay. Daisy?
Yes.
And Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes. So, motion passes six zero with one abstention. And none opposed. Okay, we now move on to remarks, public remarks, in which case they will be email communications at this time. Carrie, if you want to share what has come in since our last board meeting, and we can address them.
Sure. We had one email. This was before the decision was made, I think, to go full remote for this period of time, but the question basically it raised is, you know, whether the eight-period remote schedule is too much, too much time spent in front of the computer without breaks. So I'll leave that to whoever's going to address that one.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Cunningham. So I'm going to pass this to Dr. Gosh, knowing that she and her committee have adjusted and looked at this very, very carefully. Dr. Gosh?
Yes, thank you. So, Mrs. Horler and I have had extensive discussions about this. As you know, we've been soliciting feedback from numerous sources, focus groups, teacher and student focus groups, parent surveys, student surveys. At our last focus group, which all high school students were invited to, we asked a couple of questions about the all-remote schedule. One component that the high school students who were there felt was important to keep were office hours. Office hours are happening at the end of the day, so office hours coupled with the contractual open time that need to happen sort of force us into that contracted day, contracted, the day where there's a lot going on at once, right, those eight periods. So what we have talked about is we want to live the schedule. This schedule wasn't just something we made up, right? Like, it was informed by a lot of feedback with a lot of voices, including the teacher leaders at the high school. We want to live this, and then we want to get some more feedback on it if we need to. I don't know that it's the perfect schedule. We know that there are about 50 students who might not have a break throughout those eight periods, 50 out of about 1,000. But we want to make sure that we feel like this is something that we want to try. We want to get feedback on, and we want to revisit after the all-remote period of time ends on January 8th.
Thank you, Dr. Gosh. I know you've been making a lot of adjustments and looking at a lot of feedback, so thank you.
Okay, we received another email. Just, this individual expressed his hope that the district does return to in-person classes on January 11th, and just asked whether the district intends to study the policies that have been in place in the fall regarding quarantining, just to see, you know, how those policies may change or be different in January when we come back.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. And I remember this email, and this individual was very, very supportive of the district. I want the board to know. The answer, of course, is we continue to look at all of our policies and all of our actions in regard to COVID-19. We have to work within the parameters of the Department of Health, of the advice from our medical directors, and also from the State Department of Health. And, you know, just as an example, the CDC is looking at the amount of quarantine time and changing that, but the State Department of Health is still sticking with the number of quarantine days that we, 14. So we'll continue to look very carefully at all the recommendations and all the medical advice that we get and make sure that we're following it, and I really appreciate it also, the many positive comments that that email gave us as well.
Dr. Ben, do you mind if I add something to that?
Please do, please do, Dr. Gosh.
So just like you said, Dr. Ben, though, we don't make the rules in terms of what gets someone quarantined, right? That is set out by the Department of Health, and it's very clear in their communications to us what circumstances warrant that. We can, however, change some of our procedures, which we've done for in-person instruction in order to limit those circumstances. So the one-tier busing, for example, right, those larger holding areas at the beginning and end of the day is a good example. K-5 eating in the classrooms as opposed to eating in the cafeteria or in a larger space. So those are just some examples of, we don't control the, again, what the criteria is to be quarantined, but we can look at our own policies or practices and procedures to see how we can minimize that, which is exactly what we've done. And I just want to thank the building administrators for all the hard work that they've done in order to make those changes on the fly as we learn more and more about each situation.
And also, thank you, Dr. Gosh. Also, Ms. Cunningham, we do want to get our students back into school. We want to get the COVID-19 testing up and running. So I just want to, I think, Mr. Carlson said it very beautifully at the end with his statement that, you know, we know how important it is for students to be in school. So, yes.
All right, and the last one came in just before the decision about taking this period of time for all remote. And the question basically was just whether, you know, to consider the impact that that has on all of the students, but especially our special education students, you know, and then the need for our kids to be in school and our staff to work.
And so I want to first start off by saying that this person is a wonderful advocate for our special education children. And this is, we certainly, we want to make sure we get all of our children back in school. And it weighs heavy on all of our hearts and our minds. Every student, but also especially our special education students, because we know how much they really need to be in school. And I think past practice over this, from the start of the pandemic, you could see how Dr. Kennedy and her department have worked tirelessly to get our kids back as many as we could. So we will continue to do that. We are planning with the COVID-19 testing. We are planning to get everybody back. We want all of our kids back, and I just really appreciate the advocacy. I truly do, because it reminds us of all the things we need to keep in mind moving forward.
Okay, that was it. I don't have any others.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we can now move on to board remarks, committee updates. Anyone on the board want to share anything?
If I can give a couple of updates. For the first time in a long time, I was able to get in on the Patterson meeting. They had originally done Youtubes and then limited people coming, but they just went down to Zoom. So I was able to get on and see where they're going, and they are thankfully plugging ahead. This week, tomorrow will be the Village, followed by Southeast on Thursday, so if there's anything in particular, anybody deems worthy, let me know, and I will forward it to them. Last week, there was a presentation from Westchester Park and School Boards on supporting students in the new landscape, which had a lot of nice information. Our previous superintendent was representing her new school district Hastings, and she had a presentation. What I can do is whoever was not able to attend, I will forward the link on the presentation. There was a lot of presentations on mental health, the new landscaping, and dealing with the new digital world and the divide. And I'll be more than happy to forward that out. And I did have one question I would like to see if maybe we could bring up at a future board meeting if the board deems it appropriate. I had stumbled last year across a piece where some school boards had added student representation actually on the board. I know we have some very dedicated students, probably from the demo, that come and they give us the updates. But this enables an actual student representation on the board. They don't get to go to exec, they don't get to vote, but they do bring in the student perspective of, they'll be sitting with the other board members, and they can ask questions, and they can bring insight, and especially at a time such as now, maybe an additional insight would be valid. You know, I had stumbled across it from a group upstate. I had contacted them, and they sent me a copy of their policy. And I think I also got copies from maybe Westchester Park and maybe NISBA. And if, just something if we could think of down the road, if that's something we would like to discuss, I would forward the information into Dr. Van Lo as necessary, but just something for future discussion if possible. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
So I'll just say, if I could, Sonia, this is the last board meeting before the big BEF Jeep raffle. So we really thank the community for their support going forward with this year's fundraiser. It's been, so far, we feel that it's been successful to this point. The drawing is on December 26th. So please take this opportunity. There is a special promotion going on currently, a kind of a final push. Everyone who buys a ticket has entered for the opportunity for a small gift going forward, but it's really an opportunity, A, to potentially win a Jeep for $25,000, or potentially, or every donation obviously goes directly to fund the BEF. Now, we saw earlier in the agenda, the donation that they secured for Chromebooks and for technology. And the more support we get from the community, the more we're able to do for the schools, for the seniors, and every dollar goes directly into improving the educational careers of our Brewster students. So any support you can give, we would appreciate, and good luck to everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Our next meeting is January 12th. And as a reminder to the community, you're always welcome to email the board and the superintendent at boe@brewsterschools.org. And enjoy the holidays, enjoy time with family once again. And we still need to get back to executive session. We didn't finish earlier. We ran out of some time there. So I do need to ask for a motion from the board so we can go back into executive session and finish up our quarterly review and check-in with our superintendent evaluation or board check-in on our evaluation. And so just a motion for that, please.
Carrie, I'll make the motions, Sonia.
Carrie, thank you. And a second?
Eric, I'll second.
Eric, thank you. And I should just also note, we will not be returning to public session to take any sort of action. So we can just go to the vote. Going to executive session, Carrie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Francine?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Myself, Sonia, yes. Motion passes seven zero. We're off to exec. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Night, everyone.
Night, everybody.